Yeah, yes, yeah. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting August twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three. It's now six P M. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Francie, I could take the role, please.
Mr. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Young here. Mr. Walters here. This Cleveland McGrath.
Yeah.
Ms. Molton.
Here.
Mr. McDougall. Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Um, I move to excuse Councilmember McDougall. He is on a work trip.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Mr. Young to excuse Mr. McDougall. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed, a motion carries. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge? All right, we are on to item three, which is announcements and committee reports. And our first, actually, I've got a couple of quick announcements, and then we'll jump right into some really fun, good stuff. First of all, I I'm getting ahead of the Public Safety Committee because I don't see Chief Harris here. But we sent a team out to take a look at our ladder truck in Wisconsin and excited to report that almost six months away. So that's, I know that sounds far away, but that's kind of good. Actually, we think April, we should see the ladder truck come in, come in here. So excited there. And also in the Fire Department, we received our Association Washington Cities grant to support our outreach coordinator for another year. That's the one that supports our community paramedic. So getting ahead of the Public Safety Committee. Next, Open Streets, I heard lots of participation and thanks for all, certainly to the staff and those of you who are able to participate. It was a wonderful and fun event from all reports. Also, not this weekend coming up, but next weekend Naval Air Station Whitby Island is hosting an open house at September ninth from eight A M. to three P M. So it's kind of rare. They open up the gates. They still let me on there with an old I D. Card, but they're open to the public on not this weekend, but next weekend, open house, and you can see one of the largest, larger employers in the region and what they do over there. Uh, but this weekend is Labor Day weekend, so enjoy your time with family and friends and be safe. So now we are on to item three A, which is confirmation of Public Works Director, and this is an action item. So at this time, I would like to ask for Counselors confirmation of my appointment of Andrew Rayham as the City of Anacortes Director of Public Works effective September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Rayham comes from, comes to us with twenty-three years of experience in municipal government from the City of Redmond, where he held progressively responsible roles in both Public Works and Planning Departments. Mr. Rayham has a B S in Environmental Sciences from the University of Washington. And for eight years, Mr. Rayham also served as the mayor and city count and city council member for his hometown, the City of Bothell. Mr. Rayham will be responsible for directing the operations of each division of the Public Works in support of our city goals. So this is, and I know you've seen the resume. I know many of you were involved in the, in the numerous panels. We had, I think, twelve applicants, ten really good applicants, and we worked our way down to four applicants that we tortured with some multiple interview panels. And and then we've come up with our selection. So I know, like I said, I think at least three of you were involved in some of those interviews. So if you got any questions, happy to, happy to take them, but also I would entertain a motion to confirm Mr. Ray and as Public Works Director.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I moved that we confirm this race as a public works director.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young and a second by Mr. Carter to confirm the appointment of Andrew Ram as the City of Anacortes Public Works Director. And I think I can do a voice vote here. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Well, that's great. And Mr. Am, you want to come on up and say a few words? Think you've met everybody on council now as of tonight. Maybe Mr. McDougall still have to meet, but and you have blue or green light, and then you're ready to go.
There we go. All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I really appreciate this opportunity. It's a huge, it's a huge thing for me. I haven't moved in my life. Basically, I've born and raised in Bothell within about a square mile. I spent most of my life and worked for a city for twenty-three years. So this is yeah, it's a big deal for me, too. So I'm really looking forward to this. You're going to get one hundred percent of me. I'm just flattered that you guys chose me to do this job, so I you will get a hundred percent of every day. Um, but I did want to just real quickly in by means of introduction to give you an idea of the values that I'm going to lead the Public Works Department with. Uh, I just feel that's important. That's kind of the foundational thing. So the the first one, the first value that I've hold close is the commitment to service. The the drive for public service of working for cities should be something that is is really interesting and important to all of our employees in the Public Works Department. I've seen ones that don't really, you know, they it's a job to them, which is fine, but the real important part is people that actually get something out of serving eighteen thousand community members in this town. So that's my first one. The next one is integrity. I think it's paramount that we're honest and we behave ethically. Uh, that's just a standard that I stand by. Accountability to act responsibly, transparently, and set goals and measure ourselves against those goals. I'm I'm pretty big on work planning and making sure that we we get to our goals. Another one is safety. These are, these are specific to public works, but believe it or not, public works work is extremely dangerous. We're usually in a road. Uh, there's usually high pressure systems. There's biohazards. There's all sorts of things. So we got to be really careful to make sure we go home. Everybody gets to go home every night. So that's a, then the last one is teamwork. Public Works is a confederation basically of different services that the city provides, and it's hard to keep them together as a one department and one team, but I'll do my best to do that because I've found it's especially in times of emergencies, if you had a sewer overflow or if the water main breaks and you get more than just the Water Department there to take care of it for the Sewer Department, the first example. Um, it it just goes much, much smoother. Uh, so we're going to work on. I don't know if that's how it is done here already. I hope it is, but if it's not, we'll we'll work towards that and become a unified department. And that's what I have.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you so much, and we're very pleased to have you and welcome aboard. Okay, next, oh, you know what? We should probably do a picture real quick. All right, good stuff. Thank you once again. All right, we are going to move on to our item three B, which is Fiber Committee. And we have a report from the Fiber Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
Mr. McDougall and I attended the Fiber Committee meeting last week and heard a variety of metrics from the Fiber Department. Notably, they are achieving three to five installs per day. They are preparing to use the fiber business engine that they have had constructed to um, keep track of all the fiber orders, make sure that they're reflected on our utility bills and that all of that information is stored in one place. Uh, I think we're looking forward to hearing that that has actually gone into implementation. Uh, they're getting closer on the E D A. Grant implementation, finalizing contracts, and they expect a construction invitation to bid in late September. They have broken, per our suggestion, the E D A. Area into four different sections. So the idea there is that the contractor who completes that work, this is the next work after uh, Gwemyssview will accomplish all work in each of those four session sections before moving on to the next section. So the the first will be sort of the more commercial area and the more rural area uh, to the south than the northwest Cap Santa area. The third will be Bruce's neighborhood. Um, and then finally, west of D Avenue. I'm not sure exactly where the line is. Uh, I I imagine you're last, but um, we are looking at a forty percent take rate in Gwemyssview. That's the area that's uh, under construction right now, and consistently we are over our thirty-five percent target in each area that we turn on service to. As of today, we have two thousand fifty-three customers in service. Uh, so that's yet another milestone for our project. Some other things that we're doing with fiber is changing our upstream uh, fire internet provider. That'll happen in September, and we'll have a different backup, a secondary provider. And then finally, financing options, because we do have that four and a half million dollar line of credit that comes due at the end of this year. Uh, plus, we need cash for the rest of twenty twenty-three, then we need cash for twenty twenty-four. I think that the estimate was about ten million dollars, uh, including the pay down of the four and a half million line of credit uh, through twenty twenty-five. And so our advice, I think consistently has been, let's, let's get to the plan for that. Uh, there are a number of options. One is bonding the entire project, but interest rates being what they are, maybe that's not what we want to pursue at this time. So then there are internal loans from other city funds, there are short term bank loans, short term lines of credit. Um, so we're hoping to see some of that near term and certainly before we adopt next year's city budget. In terms of our current operating financials, July was good cash flow. Um, we could have a net three hundred thousand in by the end of twenty twenty-three.
All right, next up is the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. The Hacks Committee met last Wednesday at nine, and it was Ms. Cleland McGrath, myself and staff. And our main topic of conversation was a multifamily tax exemption program, and we explored a little bit of that, and if it's something that we want to pursue for certain zones in the city to densify our housing. And we talked about the various merits of the program and and how that would work and agreed that we will talk to different people who have developed affordable housing and people who have not. And because the twenty-year program for the exemption, you need to have the a certain number, twenty-five percent of the units need to be affordable in perpetuity, which really would be our goal. So what would it take to make that happen? Make that a reality? What kind of sort of private public partnership would that take? So anyway, it was the beginning of that conversation, but it was really interesting, and we will continue to learn more about it and bring it forward. Thanks.
Okay, next up, Planning Committee.
Uh, Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yep. So we just had our planning committee meeting today, right before council. It was Ms. Molton, Mr. Walters and myself. We had a good, long list of things to address, but we got a little bit sidetracked. We talked a little bit about um, a community member who had saved the bowling pin uh, from the Storks Lanes and what, because some proposals about what where that could go. Um, so we brought up some concerns and kind of some direction for the Planning Department to move forward um, to get a little more information on it. We also talked about short term rentals and Airbnbs. As you know, we put a moratorium on um, everything that had been a moratorium for residential, but we added the Central Business District Commercial Mixed Use um, because of a number of reasons. Uh, one that we've seen some uh, uh, long-term housing be converted to short-term rentals. Another was from what came out of our uh, bonus height incentives with six hundred square foot units. We had some concerns that those could then be converted in the future to short-term rentals, and we just wanted to take a pause to make sure that we've thought of all of the uh, intended and unintended consequences. So I think that that we had a great conversation with the Planning Department about that, and that will then go to the uh, planning or the Planning Commission for further discussion. Um, and also will allow the community to um, put in their two cents also. Uh, and that's about all we got to. We've got some more work to do the next time we've got a planning committee meeting.
Okay, next up is Museum Committee.
So, thank you. So we had a museum committee meeting uh, last week. I think it was Thursday. Uh, we did it via FaceTime because uh, it was just myself and Mr. Lunsford. Um, and the main thing is we talked about uh, their major ask for the twenty twenty-four budget. Um, there they've got an incredible Carnegie building that's over by Coslin Park. It's being utilized very well, but the amount of uh, artifacts and then the workspace that they need to preserve those artifacts. Um, they've kind of maxed out that that building space. So their propose their their initial proposal is to work on a design in twenty twenty-four. Approximately should cost about thirty thousand dollars or about ten percent of the of the whole cost, and that will be, um, we we kind of walked the property of where that would be located so that it would not take away from kind of the historical architecture and placement on the property, and then also wouldn't be a negative for uh, the the neighboring properties. Um, so it would kind of be set back um, towards the uh, alleyway, and it'd be pretty much a pole building, pretty simple, not for public, the public to tour, but really for a single story structure um, that would have heat, running water, not necessarily a bathroom, but just a storage space for artifacts and a workspace. Um, so they would like to work on that um, for the design phase for twenty twenty-four, and then hopefully construction in twenty twenty-five. There are, there are some reserve funds to do that design work. So um, I think that we hope to see that move forward in the next couple of year budget, but I would also need some fundraising from the from the museum. So that's all we discussed.
Okay, any other announcements and committee reports? All right, we're going to move on to item number four, which is public comment, and this is an opportunity for any member of the public that wishes to address the council. Uh, because we don't have everything else's contracts. So I do have this one sign up, and so you get to go first because you signed up. Uh, Pat Gardner. Uh, topic, street parking.
Mayor, um, council members, my name is Pat Gardner, Anacortes. Um, just reading an article recently in the paper for long-term parking, the twenty-four hour uh, larger vehicles at twenty-dollar fine for parking if they're parked over that length of time. Twenty five, twenty dollars doesn't hurt people that much. Um, there are a lot of large vehicles. I'm on, I kind of know where I'm at on H. There's a big trailer. It's not parked in front of its residence. And I don't think twenty dollars is enough to hurt somebody. You need to charge more so that it it will deter people from doing this. I know we're short of staff, understood, and I'm not talking maybe just that street. There are probably others. And parking in front of your house, I guess I'm not in agreement with that, but that's your rules. But I would like to see that twenty dollars increased. I mean, that's if they can afford to have that size of a vehicle there, they should be able to afford twenty dollars or more. Double it or triple it. I don't know. Make it hurt. So it deters them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder, council had that debate a couple of weeks ago. We do have a new parking ordinance, but we're always open to getting feedback on how how it's working.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. Uh, just to correct the record for the audience, I would note that for your second and third additional violations, it's twenty bucks plus twenty-five bucks, and then for fourth through six, it's twenty bucks plus fifty bucks. Then after that, it's twenty bucks plus a hundred dollars, and notably at four parking tickets, you will not be able to renew your your vehicle registration through the Department of Licensing. So there are some additional penalties built in.
Yep. And and again, another warning for the public, we'll have a additional halftime parking enforcement officer coming coming along soon to see how this new ordinance comes into play. All right, any other members of the public would like to address the council? And I almost forgot online. Sorry for the delay. Okay. All right, we will move on to item number five, which is our consent agenda items A and B, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
I move to approve consent agenda items five A and B.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Ms. Cleveland McGrath to approve consent agenda items A and B. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on to other business items six A. This is a contract award. Pass Lake Ten Inch Water Main Replacement Project. And oh, Mr. Holman's already up there because I he didn't even give me time to say, Mr. Rayham's going to present this project, but
No, we'll take it easy on him.
Okay.
Tonight.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, uh, members of the council, members of the public here and at home. Uh, Tim Holman, City Engineer. I'm here this evening to print, present to you a a con, a design consultant contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates for three hundred and eighty-one thousand uh, six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the past Lake Ten Inch Water Main Replacement Project. Let me pull up a map for you just so you can get a little familiarity with where that project is. So this waterline is part of our regional water system. Let me zoom out. And it runs from Pass Lake down S R twenty uh, to Deception Pass. So it's the last little chunk of pipe uh, heading towards Oak Harbor uh, that is owned by the city. So this is a city asset, uh, but it serves serves the regional system and particularly serves the City of Oak Harbor. Uh, this waterline has been identified for city staff uh, as being uh, in in pretty poor shape for a long time. Um, this is probably the original waterline that that served Oak Harbor. Um, when the city took over the water system and uh, it's it's a ten inch, it's a mix of steel and asbestos concrete. Uh, we've had numerous breaks on this waterline historically over the last twenty years. Uh, we did an evaluation uh, two years ago in in twenty twenty. I guess that's three years ago now. Can't count my years, and we determined that that uh, waterline was in poor condition at that time. Um, but we continued to operate it until May of this year, and when multiple leaks, I I believe approximately three leaks um, have formed uh, between Pass Lake and Deception Pass. Um, and we were forced to shut that waterline down. So Oak Harbor has their own waterline adjacent to this waterline, a twenty-four inch uh, waterline, but this is the the second waterline to them. It's built in our in our contract uh, with Oak Harbor that we serve them water through this line as well. Like I said, we we shut it down due to leaks um, in May, and we've been working on getting this contract ready so we can get it before you. Uh, this waterline runs in the drive lanes of um, S R twenty, and if you can imagine climbing up and up to and over Deception Pass, and you think of the rock solid rock cliffs that you're going through. Uh, this this waterline is essentially cut into a rock trench uh, in in the middle of S R twenty, so it's it's not going to be an easy fix. Um, and we're going to look at a couple of different ways to evaluate how to make that replacement. Um, and that's that's part of the first phase of this contract. So this this contract that we're presenting to you tonight is for one hundred percent design. If we have to fully replace that waterline, but the first phase of the contract is going to be to evaluate what methodology to use to fix that waterline, and if there's something cheaper than just digging up S R twenty. Um, and and whether that's feasible and cost effective. So we will be if you approve this contract tonight, we will be performing that evaluation first. We'll also be consulting with Oak Harbor um, when we get that evaluation done, and we know what the cost will be. Uh, that's probably something I should mention. This, the funding for this uh, is is based on a a use of the water pipe. Um, and the the use of this section of that waterline is a hundred percent Oak Harbor. So so this is using money that we've already collected from them for the regional Oak Harbor system. This project, like I said, has been on the books for a few years, but we're looking to accelerate it due to the waterline being out of service right now. So I think that's about it unless you had any questions for me.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Holman?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Holman. I just have a question about in the background on the agenda bill, it says staff may also suggest performing a condition assessment of the Ten Inch Water Main from the Pass Lake Intertie to the end of the Ten Inch Water Main. What will determine whether or not you suggest that?
Yeah, thank thanks for ringing that up. I shouldn't. I meant to mention that for miss that note to myself. Uh, so thank you for that. Yeah, we we are going to evaluate that that other segment of line. So we're going to take the next segment as we look at it from Pass Lake back to Harold's Market, and we're going to evaluate that pipe while we're out there at the same time. Um, so that's already scoped into this contract. As as it's being presented tonight, and then just for clarity's sake, that section is also um, financed on a per-use basis. So some of that section will be attributable to Oak Harbor on use, but some of it will be attributable to the regional system being picked up by a city retail, retail um, users in the regional system. That's a cumbersome way of explaining that.
So thank you. Is that part of what we picked up with the South Pedalgo P from Skagit P U D?
Yeah, exactly. So this this area feeds some of those users as well as some existing users, so that the state, we feed the State Park off of this line. Uh, we feed the the Samish, their new gas station off of this line. So those those users um, as well as a bunch of the new new users that we're going to be picking up from P U D.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Holman? Hey, this is a contract that's needs council's approval, so I'll be looking for a motion as well if there are no more questions.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Hearing no other questions, I move that City Council authorize you to sign the contracts with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars for the evaluation and design of the Pass Lake Ten Inch Water Main Replacement Project.
Second.
Hey, a motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Ms. Hubig uh, to award the contract as presented and read. Any additional discussion? Hey, Mr. Francis, I could take the vote, please.
Mr. Young. Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Molton.
Yes.
Ms. Hubig.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we uh, we are now on to item seven, which is item seven A. It's an executive session. Uh, council will now enter into an executive session regarding potential litigation per R C W four two three zero one one zero. Length of the executive session will be Length of the executive session will be approximately thirty minutes, after which council will return to council chambers. I will return to council chambers. Council doesn't have to, uh, for the purpose of adjournment. No action will be taken as part of this executive session. So I've got, uh, six-thirty and I'll be back at seven PM. Thank you.